Into the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we start off with some recognition, right? Dr. Finley?
Yes, sir.
It has been super exciting to be a part of their season this year, our track team, if you guys will come on up. I got to do almost all of their supervision and I loved every minute of being a part of it. These are great kids and they're super talented, too. Quite a few of them here, but not everyone. Some have already gone on, Sammy's gone to run at Nationals and then I think some others have jobs and things like that, but I'm gonna turn it over to these guys, but I want to give a shout out to these three right here, too, because they have really built this program as well. And we've gone from having like maybe one qualifier to an entire team, to where we're scoring points as a team at the state track meet, and that's pretty cool. And really instill a lot of good values in these kids, too, and have high expectations for them, which I love. But I couldn't be prouder of you guys and just excited to be a part of your.
Thank you.
Okay, alright. Coach.
So, like, kind of to reiterate what she said, our first year together as head coaches, we had one athlete qualify for state and it was one of our javelin kiddos. And then the next year it went to two, or...
Yeah.
Two, and then the next year, yeah, doubled every year. And so this year, I don't, I didn't even count how many exactly, but we had eight events go. And I lost track of the number of school records that were broken at each meet, but we did end up with four, five, six, seven school records broken this year. And most of those came down from 90s, 80s, early 2000s.
And 2003, yeah.
So there were some really talented folks that had those and we get a really talented crew this year.
We missed a shot put record by 29 centimeters, so.
Wow. New record into girls, 100, 200, the girls 4x1, the girls 4x2, and the boys 4x1, 4x2, and 4x4, so. And they're pretty fast records, so, pretty good stuff.
And I also wanted to thank you for your support and approving Sammy to go to New Balance Nationals. They actually just landed on their flight a couple hours ago and she competes tomorrow, Saturday, and Sunday if all things go well, so.
And six of them ended up as all-state athletes, so, which to be all-state in track, you have to make the finals, you have to be in the top eight in the state in your event. So Toby, Sammy, Josh, Dominic, Adrian.
You're gonna do so. Tell us what you ran.
I ran, I ran all the relays, 4x1, 4x2, 4x4. I'm Dominic.
I'm Adrian, I ran the same thing.
I'm Josh, I ran the same thing.
I ran the 4x2 and I'm Elaine.
I was an alternate, I just can't be there with them.
Hey, he trained with us.
So who's the fastest? Who's the fastest of you?
Kind of depends on your race.
It depends on what.
In total, 200.
Oh.
400.
Oh, yeah, one more right here.
Oh, I'm good, I did the 4x1.
It's good when they all know.
And she's a long jumper, I'm pretty good at that, too, so.
Got to sectionals and long jump.
And then, yeah, she was just a few centimeters off school record. Something that a handful of these boys actually don't know yet, and he reminded me that I need to go put it in before July 1st. We had our boys 4x2 qualify as the national high school track and field cross-country All-Americans. So it's just a thing, I go apply for and pay for it and then they are considered All-Americans. And I thought Sammy was as well, but her race, the allowable wind is 2.0, her race where she ran her 2405 was a 2.2, so her, that wind disqualifies her from being eligible for that. But the boys 4x2 are considered high school All-Americans.
Well, you know, we started in track 10 years ago in junior high with Zach, and I remember watching some of those incredible CJ teams and some of those things. And I remember sitting there watching and I thought, our kids are just as fast, they jump as far as, but they didn't have technique, they didn't have the ton, you know, passing and the technique, and so they were playing from behind. And so what you guys have accomplished, we want to thank you guys as well as the athletes, I mean, you've taught them something, the technique stuff to be successful. Besides just having raw talent to go out and run a hole in the wind, you know, they give very good job in coaching, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Any of you coming back? You guys juniors?
I'll be, we'll be.
Josh, where are you going to college?
MSSE.
Where are you going?
I'm working.
Working?
MSSE.
She'll be back. She's a freshman, and then Sammy will be back, she's a sophomore.
Exciting to see us in the state competition and being successful, thank you guys all.
Good job.
Frank was going somewhere. We gotta tell you something about how fast he was.
See, I'd talk about how fast I was in school, but Mr. Wayne knows the truth to that.
See, we thought Frank was getting ready to talk about how fast I was.
He grew up with me, he knows I can't run. I can run to the table. Okay, well, we will move in then to consent items and it's a healthy list. We have an agenda, we have minutes to the May 9th meeting, May 23rd work session, May 28th work session, June 3rd special board meeting, bills for the month of June and reconciled bills, our finance report, resignation employment list, enrollment dropout withdrawal report, transfer funds to zero teachers' funds, Mr. Coverly has the 23, 24 bus route miles, Central Methodist University MOU, the K8 handbook changes, A+ program review, federal programs review, health program review, the PAT evaluation, 24, 25 early childhood calendar, the third and final reading of board policies, our policy update 2024, the first and final reading of board policy GB1.
I love that we're seeing this get to you.
I've never been to you, consent.
That's a lot of consent.
There's a lot of excellent reading in that, though, so.
Yeah.
Good reports on the title program and a lot of that stuff, very good.
Time to shy when they ask you to hear heartburn or consent, they look at you.
Okay, I'll make a motion, will you approve consent items?
Okay, have a motion from Josh, second from John, all those in favor. We have five yays and two abstentions. Okay, Dr. Finley, Bond Project construction update.
Okay, Josh is out of town, he had a prior arrangement, so he couldn't come, I told him I would happily fill in for him. Will and I have made many trips, we've been regularly driving around, looking at construction, monitoring that, feel like they're doing a really good job, I don't know if I'd say they're on schedule, off schedule, but they're really, they're progressing nicely. The job that we have to have done, we're confident they're gonna get done before the end of the year. But recently, I'll just kind of give you an idea of what has gotten done recently. Out of Rocky, the roof prep is done, sheet rock has been finished on the inside, they're almost ready for paint, electrical service wire has been pulled, Pineville Primary, the doors were installed, ceiling tile installation was started, and they're about half done with that. White Rock, the final grade on the yard is done, looks really good, and the storefront doors have been installed in the connection building between the school and that storm shelter. Noel Elementary, they poured the floor in the storm shelter today, the area out there, they're forming up the entryway and the weight room, so they're supposed to pour that tomorrow or Monday or Tuesday, that's gonna be real soon. Plumbing and electrical demo is about 90%. Pineville Elementary, the door frames were installed, they're supposed to pour the pad on that Wednesday of next week, so they can start the block. Next week, here's what they anticipate, Pineville Primary, complete the floors, install the cabinet, completely floors to be the carpet, cabinetry installed, all HVAC equipment be up and running, and exterior grading, they will get started on that. Pineville Elementary, the slab poured for the new building, framing will be started, interior framing should be finished by then. White Rock painting in the storm shelter will start Wednesday, it takes about three days. Sheet rock will start Monday, grading on the storm shelter should be complete by the end of the week. Noel Elementary, new entry slab, weight room floor will be poured, interior masonry will be finished. Rocky, the connection building, storefront doors will be installed, roofing on the connection building will be completed, and all basing rooms should be done. So they, we're getting a lot of things done, starting, he said next week we should start seeing some big changes again, you know, it kind of goes big and you don't see anything for a while, you'll start seeing some big stuff now, so.
Any questions for Dr. Finley on the construction? Okay, I guess then we can move on into new business, Ms. Brewer, you're back up for permission for something.
Yes. Another very exciting thing that's happened at the high school, come on up, guys. We have Alexis Underwood here, she's our debate coach, and we also have Ava Coffel and Ellie Watson here, and they have qualified to go to Nationals in speech and debate a little later this month, and that's in Des Moines, Iowa, so they're asking for permission to travel out of state overnight. Ava has qualified in original oratory, she's also attending Crowder in the fall and hopes to be a teacher, first grade teacher, and so I'm gonna try and twist her arm as far as I can to get her to come back here. And then Ellie has qualified in Lincoln Douglas Debate, so, very exciting for them. Of course, you probably remember Alexis being here as a qualifier herself. I also got to go to the national tournament, so.
We're kind of Big Eight champs, right?
I was, yes, and then state and national qualifier, and these are our first national qualifiers since I went to Nationals, so, pretty exciting.
And they've done a great job this year, very, very big representatives of our school and super proud of both of them, so. Wouldn't try to argue with either of them. I tried, they won. So, they are asking for permission to travel out of state overnight and represent us at the national tournament.
When is that trip?
The 16th to the 21st.
Of?
June.
What do you need from the district?
Just need approval. Need approval to, just have a motion as a.
Right, but I mean, they have, you got everything.
We have a line for the budget for that, for national qualifiers, and so they've got their hotel arranged, and I think you're driving, right?
Didn't know if they needed.
Yeah.
Questions for?
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion from Andy, second from Bobby, all those in favor?
Hi.
Unanimous. Good luck to you guys.
Thank you.
Us very proud.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Coverly, yes, there he is. We have eight gently-used buses that we'd like to put on surplus, you should have a list of those. I think Will's planning on buying several of those.
Party buses?
Buses, my wife got them last time.
Between the canning shop and culinary, we couldn't turn those into food wagons quickly, Will. As long as you don't have them, right? As long as you take them away from me, right? Does it run? Five of them do. We can get them started.
Are you looking at auction three of those right away, then the other?
Yes, those first three listed there, oh, that's probably coming tight, I planned on putting those on the online auction to see how we can do with that. It's like a nation, well, not world, but actually auction, a lot of them go to Central and South America. On the listing, when they list those, they do list it in our area, too, it's official, listing in our area in case somebody. Okay, have a motion from Dennis and Josh, all those in favor? unanimous? Mr. Lord, you're up for a bid, which is?
Yep, have some bids to go through. The first one would be the Jane property, and I would recommend that we continue to lease that to Mr. Elliott, that's the property over on Meisner, and he put a dollar amount, $1,000, and I recommend releasing that to him.
So this is just a one-year and then we'll remit it again?
We do this every, yeah, we're, because of, rather than doing it over a span, that way it gives us options if we see needs and we don't want to be changes. So yes, just the one year.
Make a motion with that. Okay, motion from Josh, second from Bob, all those in favor? Unanimous? Okay.
My next one is for paper, this is a truckload of paper, and we've never used this company, they came in, to my knowledge, we've never used it, Liberty Paper, and the paper, the quality that they sent us seemed to be like it was gonna be okay, I would recommend that we stay with that at the cost for the truckload of $25,057.20, I recommend Liberty Paper. And then we would have that delivered after the fair, and that way we can, after that time, we'll store it up there, and it kind of doesn't conflict with a lot of movement.
Second from Andy, all those in favor? Unanimous?
District brushhoggging? So, the cost is gonna, does look to go up, we brushhog three times a year, it went up large part because of the insurance side that he has to carry, and he had, he'd been, he forewarned me of that, but with what it does and the aesthetics that it, that it does for the grounds, I still think it's something that we need to do, and I would recommend Mr. Holloway to perform that service.
Yeah, I'll make a motion. Motion from Josh, second from John, all those in favor? Six yays and.
My last item of, or bid, is the trash service, and we have Mr. Burke with GFL, and EPCO Trash also bid for this, this building, which is Mr. Jefferson's, and what I would recommend is that we stay the same we've had. So, with all the changes after Henson and stuff, there's been ups and downs, it's working itself out, it's getting better, and I think this year, I think it's gonna continue to get better, we talked to GFL and Mr. Burke and kind of looked at one of the sites, Anderson probably needed picked up more than it was, than we were, needed picked up more, so that cost went up, a lot of those costs are where we were at prior to this, so I would recommend that we continue to stay the same with EPCO performing the service at Central Office and then GFL doing the other sites.
What's the two prices at the high school?
So, it's the yardage, it's the number of containers, there are six and eight, no, I'm sorry, four and six, I guess, that would be there.
Oh, okay.
But it's the different yardage of the, of the units.
Thank you for coming, I mean, that definitely means a lot to.
Absolutely, thank you, thank you for letting us continue.
And we do appreciate your service greatly. Yeah. Except your recommendation. Yeah, you got it. Okay. Motion from Dennis, second from Andy, all those in favor? unanimous?
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, sir. Dr. Finley?
Good. I'm asked me to transfer 7% of our transportation money, which turns out to be about 1.848 million, 333, this will be used for transportation expenses, so I'll read a statement which needs, is what needs to be approved. McDonald County R1 School District Board of Education, under authority of Missouri statutes, does hereby authorize a transfer of up to the maximum of 7% of the district's line one calculation for the school foundation entitlement, district guaranteed energy cost savings contract, and transportation from the general fund to the capital projects fund. These funds will be used for transportation to make lease and performance payments, it is further resolved that any funds that are transferred but not expected in the current year shall be retained in the capital projects fund for the purpose of funding additional classroom space, as well as other improvements including parking lots, HVAC, roofs and safety, and security at the following locations, Anderson Elementary, Interstate Middle, Pineville Primary, Pineville Elementary, Rocket Comfort Elementary, Noel Primary, Noel Elementary, Southwest City Elementary, White Rock Elementary, McDonald County High School, including athletic facilities and grounds, fields, Mustang Academy, Bus Barn, Maintenance Building, and the district Central Office Building.
We need a motion on each one, right?
Yeah.
And it was how much?
One day at 848,000, 333.
Okay, that, from that, from one day.
That's what we talked about during the finance.
Right, yeah, yeah. What were you saying, Frank, need a motion, how?
We have a motion for each one.
Yeah. Motion to. Motion to accept the resolution or approve?
To approve the resolution.
Approve. Okay, all right, I'll make a motion, we approve. Motion from Josh, second from Bobby, all those in favor? Unanimous?
Do need to approve the resolution, I can't even talk, approve the resolution to amend end-of-year numbers to actual numbers, which will be that in the next two weeks.
For that, too. Okay, Dennis, we have a motion from Dennis, second from Josh, all those in favor? Unanimous? I transfer.
We'd also like to transfer place from our classroom trust fund to Fund 1 and Fund 4, 24, 25 school year, that's gonna be about 1.5 million dollars.
All right, I'll make a motion, we approve. We have a motion from Josh, second from Bobby, all those in favor? Unanimous on that? And then propose budget stipends, salary schedules for next year.
All that. Twenty different things.
Looks like all the stuff we covered in our finance meeting, but.
Most of, most of.
Anybody have any questions for our motion?
You said that the budget proposal is a carbon copy of last year's budget proposal.
Then Friday, we have a new, we have a new budget, you call it a program, okay, where it's actually, it's a lot better than what we're using, it's more live, so we can make changes and then you can immediately see all the changes on the, on the entire thing. A guy that's the superintendent, Rich Hills, written a program, it's really good, I've used it in the past, and it's very, very detailed, but it's very, for example, if we're gonna go buy two new buses, we know, we punch those numbers in immediately, we know the change of what it does to our budget, instead of having to go out and calculate it individually. We're meeting with him Friday, he's had the stuff for probably a month, say, maybe, entering all the numbers, entering our information, and once he's done, and he's pretty close to being done, so then what we'll do, we'll probably have modifications probably about the next three months on different budgetary wise. It's gonna, you're gonna like it, it's very user-friendly, it's gonna be really easy to use.
So questions, guys, comments on the revenues and expenditures? So the revenues were the same, too, right?
Yeah, you know, we know.
They should be higher.
I'm the administrator's salaries. I was looking for primary, Noel Primary, I mean, sorry, Pineville Primary, is that on there? And the old school, we moved them up.
Yeah, it's the Pineville principal.
They are not on here, they would be the same now, which we can add as the assistant principal.
It's not gonna make any difference, though.
Right, yeah, be the same as the top positions right there.
So you could just have two assistant app.
Well, maybe we'll pass some of the additional.
Yeah, academy and just the roles are already done out.
Well, it's just not reflected.
Then on the last page, it has district stipends that, don't look at the name, it's strictly the position in your voting force, nobody has to abstain from that.
Salary schedule looks pretty good. So the new salary schedule looks pretty good? So the new salary schedule looks pretty good? Secretary, you know, kind of. That first and final reading on that policy, oh, yeah, seventy-two deal.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's what I'm all, that, that, the doctor, that, that's what I'm saying, like the.
Yeah.
No, I would think if I had been all, should have done that today, I didn't.
Yeah.
You're right.
Right, yeah.
Frank, this is a different way we're used to looking at the budget, this is the same budget that we had last year.
Yeah, just plug in all the same numbers, even the revenue, the same expenditures, no changes in the expenditures.
So when the revenue goes up with the new formula, will amend the budget?
Yes, that's what we're starting on Friday. Dr. Dodd comes Friday, year one, it's coming. That's why I said the next couple of months, we'll make some amendments to the budget, that'll be the first one.
In the future, can we see it in the old format, kind of the way we used to get it?
This, yeah, this is why we did it last year and the year before, it was more like a ledger.
Yeah.
No, no, this is the way we got it last year, but in the past, we got it ledger style.
Yes.
Yes.
So you wanted a ledger.
It's just easier to read.
I tell you what, once you see the new program.
Oh, yeah, you did mention that.
That is going to be ledger form, but you're also going to be able to, similarly, let's go from page to page real quick. We'll talk about it till we down, we got a year.
Got our Dr. Wayne in, everything.
Do what I can hear of this.
We got our Dr. Wayne in, everything looks good.
Yeah, all the, all the things were done in finance meeting, all of it.
You finished reading?
Yeah.
I'm done.
Yeah.
I said, I'm done, I'm good.
Questions?
Nope. Proposal, we approve it then?
Okay, have a motion from Josh, approve the proposed budget, second from Andy, all those in favor, unanimous. It would be a carbon copy of the foundation report, we didn't have a meeting in June, annual meeting will be in July, they vote our officers back in, then we'll reseat officers for the foundation board and get the ground running for the school year and next year's activities, that's it for me.
All right, all I have left, I told you about the new budget program, we're pretty excited about that, because I think it's going to be really helpful for everybody. We have preliminary audit, audit June twentieth, and last day of summer school is June twenty-eighth, so, please wrap it up.
All right, any other questions or comments? All hearts clear? Motion from Josh to adjourn, second from John, all those in favor, unanimous.